Yep.
Good, let's do it. Good afternoon, the time is now 12:48 PM. The former board is present. State Board of Education Regular Meeting of January 12th, 2021 is reconvened. Board members, we are going to briefly cover our approval of minutes of regular and committee, the whole meeting of December 8th, 2020, and then pivot back to public comment without any objection. May I please have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular and committee, the whole meeting of December 8th, 2020?
So.
I have a motion and I have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Marilyn, if we could do a roll call vote, please.
Lipton?
Just as a point of order, I think I may have to abstain only because I did not attend that meeting, so I'm not sure I'm permitted to vote on it.
Okay. McMillan? Is that a thumbs up, Tom? I think you might be muted.
Oh yeah, you're right. Yes.
Okay. Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Strahorn?
And I think the same, I think the same would have, would apply to Mr. Strahorn as well.
You are a new member and this is your first meeting. You were not at the December meeting. Tilly? I think she's absent. She should be joining us shortly. Albridge?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. A little bit concerned about hanging Chad's there for a moment. Marilyn, are there individuals who wish to address the board during today's meeting?
There is one person who has said they would like to offer comments to the board. And Mike Flamignio, can you let that person in? I believe I have Pastor Derek McDonald on the phone. Is that true, pastor?
Yes, it is.
Okay, if you can, I'll read the rules, just so we're clear on that. You'll be limited to three minutes to address the board and I'll keep track of time. And it's practice of the board not to respond to comments during the public participation portion of the meeting. We, of course, will maintain an atmosphere of respect for all people. And if you will just state your name and the city you are from and then provide your comments, we'll be happy to hear what you have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Pastor Derek McDonald. I'm pastor of Prospect Missionary Baptist Church in Pontiac. And I am grateful and thankful for an opportunity to offer comments to the board. The purpose of my comments is certainly something that I am confident the board is very much aware of. And I want to just lend my support for this effort. One of the things that I am deeply concerned about is, and I know that our governor has indicated that she would like to see where possible, our students return back to school in March. The thing that I have great concern for is how the children are going to be able to come back into school and be successful in their learning. It was laid upon my heart as a result of the children being out of school as long as they had been, is when schools started this school year is to open up a virtual learning academy here at the church where we have students who are here every day, making certain that their assignments are completed, making certain that they're learning in a safe environment, and receiving breakfast and lunch each day. And in working with our children each day, we have come to even get a greater understanding of the deficiency that many of our children have faced during this pandemic and probably even before. We've also been able to come to become better knowledgeable of some of the other adverse experiences that our children are having. And so with that, one of the things that I'm going to be trying to advocate for at every level of government is the appropriate funding so that first and foremost, these outstanding teachers that I've had an opportunity to experience through virtual learning can be paid a higher salary. Secondly, I do believe that each of these teachers at the minimum at the elementary level is going to require at least one school aide in every classroom when the children return. And then thirdly, I do believe that social workers are also going to be needed in our schools, just from my experiencing, what I experienced each day here running this virtual learning academy. I certainly have a greater appreciation for the daily tasks that teachers have to experience and what they have to go through, and specifically trying to teach in a classroom when you have various levels of learning. They need that aid, they need that support in order for the students to be successful in their learning. I have seen and experienced their frustration even in the virtual learning to where some of them even had to shut down their virtual teaching because of the things that they were experiencing in the virtual class. I also have the ability and the opportunity, I should say, to have worked and continue to work with the Michigan ACES community, helping train others through this adverse childhood experiences and trying to help them to understand what the trauma is that our kids go through. So I just wanted to take a few moments today to share with you that I think if there's anything in the power of the board, anything that we can do from a government standpoint to provide additional funding for school aides, for social workers, and greater pay for the teacher, that our children might be successful. That is my hope, that is my prayer, and that's where I am.
Thank you. Thanks for joining us. And that concludes public participation.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Thank you, pastor. We now turn to that portion of our agenda, which is the report of the board president, Dr. Albridge.
Thank you. So first of all, I would just like to welcome, officially welcome Ellen Cogan Lipton and Jason Strahorn to the State Board of Education. Thank you both for running for this office and for your commitment to Michigan students. I hope you will find this a fulfilling and rewarding experience, although at times it can be a little trying and frustrating, but overall, very good work happens on this board. And if there's anything we can do to help your transition onto the board, please let me know. I would also like to thank Pam, Tiffany, Tom, and Judy for continuing or taking on additional roles with the board. Appreciate the added work that you'll be doing over the next couple of years. And in addition to that, this board has two standing committees that are appointed by the president every two years. The first one is the Agenda Planning Committee. And consistent with past practice, this committee has been compiled of members of the executive committee. And therefore, this committee will include myself, Pamela Pugh, Tiffany Tilly, and Tom McMillan. Of course, any member of the board who would like to sit in on this meeting and/or participate is more than welcome to. These are just the official members, but everybody is welcome. And anyone at any time can recommend agenda items to members of the Agenda Planning Committee. The second committee is the Legislative Committee. And I am recommending that Ellen Cogan Lipton serve as chair of this committee. Given her background with the legislature, I think that she will bring a tremendous amount of knowledge, history, as well as procedure and understanding to the committee. Additional members that I'm recommending are Jason Strahorn, Nikki Snyder, and Judy Pritchett. And again, like the Agenda Planning Committee, we, past practice has always been that any member of the board who wishes to participate and/or sit in on a committee meeting is welcome to do so. All committee meetings are posted, so they are open meetings, and therefore, quorum is not an issue. We also have a vacancy on the School for the Blind Trust Fund. Nikki currently serves on this. Michelle Fecto was our second board member. So any member who is interested in serving, please let either myself or Marilyn know. And then finally, I couldn't let this week go by without addressing what we saw happen in Washington DC last week. In many ways, we saw the best of what this country stands for. In the spirit of the First Amendment, citizens took advantage of their rights to free speech, to assemble, and to petition their government. And we are all fortunate that we live in a country that allows for such activity without fear of government retribution. But unfortunately, we also saw the worst that this country can, can give us. The actions of those who stormed the Capitol, who engaged in destructive and deadly behavior, who marched through the Capitol with a Confederate flag, threatened elected officials, all in a failed attempt to instill their will over the will of the people and of the Constitution, was, in my opinion, disgusting. It was unacceptable, and it belies everything this country is supposed to stand for. And even now, as we speak, as this meeting is, is taking place, efforts are taking place at the state Capitol, protect it from further violence over the next couple of weeks. This is, this is just astounding. But as horrific as these events are, they're also learning opportunities because our children see what we see. And I imagine that there have been some important and necessary conversations happening in the classroom, whether they're in person or virtual. And I wanted to commend and thank those educators, including our own Teacher of the Year, Owen Bondano, who are allowing these conversations to happen, encouraging them, using them as civics lessons, and providing historical context. As a political science major myself, I've, I've always felt very strongly about the need for active and engaged civics education. And unfortunately, the current accountability measures that focus almost entirely on math and reading at the expense of other areas of education have had a negative effect. This country needs to do a better job of civics education and with it, the critical thinking skills so desperately needed in today's environment. And so it starts with us. I would like to see this board, and by extension, this department, dedicate efforts to enhancing civic education opportunities in our schools. And I am going to dedicate myself to this effort, and I welcome any other board member or members that would like to join me. I am going to be following up with Dr. Rice after this meeting and may perhaps propose a term limited committee of the board. So I just wanted to introduce this as a topic. Stay tuned, there's going to be more information on this. But I, I just feel like it's so, so often, it's hard to imagine how we can make an impact and we can make a difference. But the great thing about serving on this board is we do have that ability. And it, and it does start with us. So that is going to be one of the things that, that I would like to focus on over the next two years. Thank you.
Thank you, President Albridge. I too would like to add my welcome and congratulations to Mr. Jason Strahorn. And Ms. Ellen Cogan Lipton as our new board members. Strap on your seatbelts. It's a fun ride. We, we welcome you. I would like to share a couple of announcements of the last few days. The department announced yesterday the opportunity for school districts across the state to apply for $10,000 grants for the starting of teacher cadet programs for students in their schools. This is part of what we call Future Proud Michigan Educator, Future PME. The effort here is to create a cadre of young people who have an interest in becoming teachers, high school, in some cases, earlier than, than that. Nurturing their interest, informing them about areas related to their interest, and helping us grow up a crop of young people who will be ultimately our, our teachers in the future. So we're looking forward to this, this exciting work of our Office of Educator Excellence of the department, and we'll be sharing more with the board and the community in the coming months. Last week, we announced a call for nominations of educators, of African-American authors and works for recognition in February as part of African-American History Month. This is an effort to raise up great African-American authors and their works as part of our work to increase student engagement with literacy. You heard me say this morning that we can certainly improve our technical teaching of literacy. But in addition to that, we have to increase student engagement with literacy, student interest in literacy. And one of the ways that we increase engagement with literacy is to make sure that our children, all of our children, see themselves in their literature. Children should see themselves in their literature, mirrors. They should also be able to see others in their literature, windows. And then finally, they ought to be able to see others in their literature as inspiration and potential for their own lives, sliding doors. So literature ends up being a mirror back on ourselves, and in certain cases, windows through which we see other people in some cases. And then finally, sliding doors, opportunities for us not only to see others in our literature, but also as inspiration and potential for us in our own lives. We'll be taking these nominations of African-American authors and works for sharing, for lifting up during African-American History Month, as I mentioned. We're looking forward to doing that. We need to drumbeat around the tremendous richness, the tremendous diversity in literature as a way of increasing our children's engagement in literacy and ultimately their literacy levels. I would like to end by, if I could, echoing the comments of our board president, Dr. Albridge, about what took place at the Capitol last Wednesday. It was an outrage. The events at the Capitol were an undermining of our country and of our country's system of government. As troubling, they were provoked by the president who is charged with upholding the Constitution and the rule of law. It was a lamentable day in our history. And I think it appropriate to end with a paraphrase of the former U.S. Secretary of Education in her resignation letter to the president. Our children are indeed watching. Thank you for the opportunity to share those, those thoughts with you today. We're going to pivot in our agenda at the, at the moment and turn to our Michigan Teacher of the Year and one of our Regional Teachers of the Year, Mr. Owen Bondano. The 2021 Michigan Teacher of the Year will present his report. Mr. Bondano is an English Language Arts teacher at the Oak Park Freshman Institute in Oak Park Schools. Ms. Chantel VanderGalian, Region Three Teacher of the Year is joining us from Wyoming Public Schools. She is an eighth grade English teacher at Wyoming Junior High School. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. Teachers, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. First of all, I wanted to welcome the new board members, as everyone else has. I'm super excited to see you here and to be able to hear your thoughts and views on things. I also wanted to thank the board president for your words as well. Thursday was a difficult conversation in all of my classes, but a necessary one. You know, my students entered our, our virtual learning environment with all kinds of anxieties and fears and misconceptions, and hopefully, they left after our class period feeling both a little better, a little, have a, have a more grounded understanding of what was happening, and also, in some cases, feeling empowered, that they could do things moving forward about the state of the world. And as a teacher, you know, I spent much of Wednesday debating whether or not I even wanted to discuss it. And if I did, how was I going to go about that? So it's always a difficult day when it's the day after an event like that. And so thank you for your words. And also, real quick, before I begin my presentation, I just wanted to give a quick citation for Dr. Rice, because we know that in all fields, the work of Black women is often subsumed and not recognized the way it should be. So the concept of windows, mirrors, and doors in literacy comes from Rudine Sims Bishop, a notable Black woman and scholar in our field. So I just wanted to provide a citation. Give me just one moment and I'll get those slides up for you and I'll begin. I'm also working on a new machine, so I, I'm working on it. But, uh, here we go. Perhaps. Okay, hopefully you can see it. Please let me know if you can't. As stated, my name is Owen Bondano. I am the current Michigan Teacher of the Year. I teach ninth grade English in Oak Park Schools. And joining me today is Chantel VanderGalian, who is the Region Three Michigan Teacher of the Year. Now, my tenure as Michigan Teacher of the Year, as I've said before, and will probably say again, is very different from many Michigan Teacher of the Year tenures. I'm not traveling around the state. I'm not visiting schools and bringing back a report of what I'm seeing across the state. So instead, my major goal in my presentations to the board has been to, when I hear issues being discussed by the board, to bring my own experience as a currently practicing teacher on those issues to the board. So to that end, I would like to give a few reflections this month on standardized testing, based in my own experience and the facts that I know. So first of all, as a student, I of course took standardized tests. I was, I grew up in Michigan, so I've taken the MEAP and all those things when I was a student. And when I was a student, the major justification for these tests was always the Michigan Promise Scholarship. That, it was explained to us that we were doing well on these tests to prove that we deserved a scholarship for college. Unfortunately, I was in college when that scholarship was rescinded. And I felt at the moment that it was pointless for me to have taken those tests, because no one had ever explained any other reason to take the tests other than to prove that you deserved a scholarship. As a teacher, of course, I administer quite a bit of testing in my room. I currently teach ninth grade, and my students take the PSAT twice a year. We take the NWA MAP three times a year. And they take a district mandated pre-post test in every classroom, in four to eight cycles per, per classroom per year. So in my classroom in particular, when I add up all this time spent testing, it's about 18 days total across the school year, which is about 80% of a teaching month or 10% of the entire teaching year. And when I taught eighth grade, which I did for many years before I moved to the ninth grade, we did not take the PSAT, but we did take M-Step. So when you adjust the calculations there, that becomes 23 full days of the school year spent on testing. Of course, these numbers don't include sort of testing adjacent activities, like days spent pre-bubbling answer sheets or taking practice tests or anything like that. But in the eighth grade, that was a full teaching month or 12% of the teaching year that was spent on this testing. I know that testing can be a controversial topic, and there are lots and lots of opinions on testing. For me personally, I see both sides of the issue very much. I don't fall in any one particular camp on this. I can see the compelling arguments on both sides. For the pros, you know, I, I think it's valuable to have comparable scores and to do it in a way that is free of individual teacher bias. I think it can keep students and teachers focused on the mandated curriculum and, and topics. And I think that tests that provide timely data can provide a lot of good data for making decisions in my classroom about what skills I'm going to focus on for which students. There are also many cons, of course. It only measures really one kind of ability. It encourages often rote memorization and recitation, teaching to the test, and it is evaluation of a student and their progress by a single snapshot, one moment in time, rather than by a comprehensive big picture, which also means that it's, those results are heavily influenced by the daily mood and motivation of the student on the day they take the test. To dig a little bit deeper, for, for my personal views on testing, like I said, a good, timely test can provide useful data for student strengths and weaknesses. And this data for me personally helps drive my instructional decisions, but only in concert with more data, a more complete picture of my student and how they are performing. I think that students can be motivated when they see growth over time, so especially a test like the NWA MAP. We make all sorts of displays and charts and graphs in my room to, to show our growth over time and really celebrate our successes, and that can be highly motivating for some students. It can also be motivating for some students to see the test as a challenge that they have to face, that they're sort of squaring up against, right? But of course, not all tests provide that kind of timely, usable data that can be used directly in the classroom. And I think one of the greatest cons of standardized testing is of course, when that testing is misused. And in my opinion, one of the greatest misuses of this is when it's used for teacher evaluations. As we know, the state requires a portion of teacher evaluations to be based on student growth, and there are many, many districts that use data from, from standardized testing as that measurement of, of student growth for evaluations, even sometimes doing that against the wishes of those who designed that particular test. And I have seen firsthand that some of the behaviors that this particular con encourages in, in teachers is sometimes the deliberate bombing. You know, they encourage students to deliberately bomb the pre-test or the first time they take a test in a year in order to pad that growth, which of course negates any diagnostic value of that first test. There's increased teaching to the test. There's often, as was mentioned just a few minutes ago, a, a shifting away from other topics to focus in more heavily on math and reading because it's what's most heavily tested. And we lose civics, we lose extracurriculars, and especially students who are already struggling lose opportunities for extracurriculars because they are remediated so heavily to what the test is measuring. And there's often a disproportionate emphasis, I think, on teaching testing strategies and, and so on, especially to struggling students rather than the content itself. Of course, all coins have another side, and so this, it may motivate teachers to better motivate their students to perform on testing days, but I think overall, its use in evaluations is a tragedy. I've recently learned in my role as Michigan Teacher of the Year, some of the history regarding standardized testing that I did not already know, and it made me reevaluate what I think regarding equity in these tests. So I wanted to share a bit of this history I recently learned with you. So Carl C. Brigham, he created the Army Alpha Test. It was to screen soldiers for World War I. And we know based on his own publications, including the book cited here, A Study of American Intelligence, that he published in 1923, that he believed that the so-called Nordic race was intellectually superior to all other races, and that controlling racial purity in America was a way of safeguarding American intelligence. And these views were reflected in many of the testing questions in the Army Alpha Test. The Army Alpha Test became these, the first version of the Scholastic Aptitude Test or the SAT. And then our friend James Bryant Conant over here was the, the president of Harvard for much of the 30s and 40s and the beginning of the 50s as well. He brought the SAT to Harvard as a means of screening, screening candidates and to create what he called a governing intellectual elite. And he also consolidated many of the testing organizations that were springing up at this time into educational testing services. There have been many studies even within this last decade that prove that there are biases still in these tests that have not been weeded out in the subsequent decades since their creation. And I find this most disturbing when we think about how many opportunities are tied to the services of ETS and other such organizations and tests. You know, it's a gateway to so many opportunities for so many students. And to know that they were originally written with the intent of excluding some of our students was fairly shocking to me. I'm sure that others here already know this history, but to me, it was relatively new history that I learned. So sort of lastly, in my classroom personally, I am trying to make a shift when it comes to using data in my classroom from this snapshot model that uses a lot of individual testing to a big picture model where I'm getting a more overview of my student and how they are performing before I make my decisions. So I think teachers in general need development and practice and gathering more data. Much of my knowledge in how to gather data, how to create reliable assessments, how to collect and progress monitor with that data, how to apply that data, has been very piecemeal. Often, I've learned it on my own because I know it's an area that I would like to grow in, rather than having learned it in my training or, you know, as a, as a student before I became a teacher or in my training since then. Excuse me. So I, I believe that teachers need to, as I said, develop a practice of gathering more data, not less of it, but it needs to be from many places. Testing is not the only valid form of data, and a wide variety of assessment data equals a more complete picture of how a student of how a student is doing and how they're performing and what they know and don't know. So more specific and precise evaluation tools cut down on teacher bias, which is something that tests do well and that the individual teacher bias doesn't come into play. But teachers still need training on how to design reliable assessment tasks, collect that data, progress monitor, apply what we've learned, and so on. Decisions that are made about the classroom, about our students, and even about our teachers should be made with as big a picture as possible. Standardized testing may be one piece of that picture, but it should not be the entire picture that we are looking at. And with that, I would like to introduce to you Chantel VanderGalian, the Region Three Michigan Teacher of the Year.
Thanks so much. So interested in the board for having me today. Can everyone hear me okay? Can you hear me on?
I hear you. Yep.
Okay, perfect. And so if you'll head on over to the next slide, just a little bit about me. I have been married for 18 years and we have one daughter. Her name's Darby. She loves to cook. She's pictured here in the bottom right, serving food that she helped prepare with a chef for my husband's company employees and we hosted that at our house. She's also pictured below with our newly adopted rescue greyhound named Quinn. So and I know Owen has a greyhound as well. We share a love of greyhounds, so. And then the next slide focuses on my classroom. So you'll see here top left, I am in a circle. I participate in the World Read Aloud Day and also the Global Read Aloud. If you're not familiar, the both really great days my students, even though they're eighth and ninth grade, they still love being read to. So I found that it's one of their favorite things and I've worked really hard to build up my personal classroom library, which you'll see in the center. And it was important to me to have books, as Dr. Rice talked about earlier today, that are mirrors and windows and sliding doors. It was Jason Reynolds talked about this, about the books. He had never read a full novel until he was 17. And so to become an author and to write about stories that featured people of color and people that talked and looked like him, and it was important to him. And so I share that passion, just that every student with all the diverse backgrounds can find a book on my shelf that they're interested in and that they feel represented is important to me. I wanted to include a picture of myself. When we're in person, this is daily life. It makes the read aloud hard, but we persist. And then most recently, I put together a proposal. I did a lot of research about, as you have heard, the mental health of our students and staff this year is just startling and that one in five students are struggling with depression, some mental health issue. And so I did some research on reading dogs and having dogs in the classroom. And then I put together a proposal that my board approved. And so you'll see the bottom two pictures are students with Quinn. She comes into the classroom and my students get to take turns sitting and reading to her with her. And just she's provided a calming presence. The students look forward to seeing her on the days that she gets to come in. And then I also did a survey before I brought her in, knowing that some students don't care for dogs. And so I make sure she's in a front location of the room and but it's been overwhelmingly positive. The parents have emailed me that it's been a highlight of some of the students returning. Unfortunately, she was only able to come for one week before we closed again. And so this week, as we look forward to going back in person next week, students are asking if Quinn is coming next week and they're already excited about that. I've become chopped liver. They no longer come in to see me. They come in to see the dog, but I'll take what I can get. And then if you'll go to the next slide, please, Owen. And also thank you for doing this. I am glad I don't have to be in charge of changing the slides. So I'm passionate about running and anything outdoors. I participated in my first Ragnar two years ago, which is a 200-mile relay race from Muskegon to Traverse City and just being together with a team of people who enjoy running. My daughter ran a bit, a portion of that with me. And that was just a highlight of the time. I love golfing. I've taken that up a few years ago. And the center picture of the cake is a rainbow cake my daughter made for her cousin's birthday. So I enjoy cooking as well. It's something I enjoy sharing with my students. It builds community. And I also consider myself an anti-racist educator, working with other teachers across the state and teachers in my own school. Some of the teachers have formed an equity team and we're working to examine policies in our building that disproportionately affect students of color. And for example, we got rid of our zero tolerance policy for hoodies. And we were kicking kids out for noncompliance when they had their hoodies on and just getting rid of that policy because it we realized it was harming our students of color. And so and making sure examining our curriculum and what are we because we take that responsibility of being in front of our students and crafting curriculum that is truthful and that benefits all of our students equally. So I think that that is the end of the slide. I just wanted to, I made some notes. I want to thank Owen for working tirelessly to lift up issues in education and to support teachers and students all over the state. When he talked about testing, something that came to mind because I've been working on this starting last year. When we talk about our students of color and deficit language, when we talk about testing, because it's their subgroups, right? So our underperforming subgroups and our students who receive special education services, they're always the subgroups when we talk about testing. And so thinking through who are we comparing our students to and why? And how that could be harming them? So I'm not sure where I'm at at time, but I just want to thank you all so much for having me.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bondano, Ms. VanderGalian, for your presentations and your tremendous representation of the teaching profession, particularly at this fraught moment in our in our history. Just a note on chopped liver from a pescatarian. There could be worse things. It's hard to compete with Quinn. I understand that. Thank you again. Thank you to both of you. Board members, at 1:25, our next item on today's agenda is the approval of the amendment to the State Board of Education bylaws. Dr. Albridge will lead the discussion.
Thank you. So the pandemic reflected needs across the state, across our schools, and of course, this board was no different. One area that we recognized was that our bylaws do not lay out a mechanism for canceling a meeting in the case of an emergency. And so we have put together an amendment to the State Board of Education bylaws. This amendment was proposed during the December board meeting and it was suggested that a new paragraph be added to the end of section one, I'm sorry, 1A. And that new paragraph would read, "Given an appropriate reason and with the concurrence of the State Board of Education President, the chairperson may cancel a regularly scheduled meeting. Appropriate reasons may include but are not limited to exigent circumstances related to health, safety, weather, or other events affecting the state or the Lansing area." So section six of the State Board of Education bylaws states that bylaws may be amended in accordance with the following procedure. "The proposed amendments shall be submitted in writing and shall lay on the table between the meeting at which they are submitted and the next duly constituted meeting at which time such amendments must be acted upon. The proposed amendments shall require a minimum of six affirmative votes for approval." So in accordance with the above-mentioned procedure, the amendment to the State Board of Education bylaws was proposed during the December 8, 2020 board meeting and is now being presented for board approval today.
Okay, thank you very much, President Albridge. May I please have a motion to approve the amendment to the State Board of Education bylaws?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second if we could with discussion. So I think I've got board member Lipton. Was that was that regarding this topic or was that the preceding topic?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Rice. It was my typing hands were not fast enough, so I apologize. I did just want to just make a very quick comment on the teacher presentations, if I might. I think that they were, I very much appreciate the comments from both teachers, particularly on the history and background behind standardized testing, which I think is very important to always understand where we came from in order to better inform where we want to go. And I did just want to make a note, since we did talk about funding earlier, to just sort of bring that full circle, that we are, according to Dr. Diane Ravitch, a noted educational historian, we are the only country that tests as much as we do of any what we consider, you know, first world nations, for example, in education. And if we do want to look at efficiency of funding and people getting the most bang for their buck, if you will, we might want to look at the testing budget, the standardized testing budget, not only of this state but nationally. I think most board members, if not all, would be quite shocked at the amount of money this country spends on standardized testing. And we might want to look at the the wisdom of spending that enormous amount of money and look at, again, as I said, the bang for the buck and the value that we get. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. We certainly would do well to do that. We've had an 18-year, two-decade period of our educational history in the country devoted to high-stakes testing, and it has not improved public education as it was expected to have done. It's time to get off that dead horse. Dr. Pugh, you had a comment about thank you to both of our teachers. And Ms. Snyder, a comment.
I'm actually gonna go back to the amendment that we're working on and I want to just kind of put it out there just as an option to amend the main motion. Maybe broaden the issue at task here, not just about whether the chairperson would cancel a regularly scheduled meeting, but permit online access to meetings in general, since we're kind of revisiting how COVID and the circumstance itself, the new today, if you will, is impacting us. The reason why I suggest this is, you know, if we have like a board member or an MDE employee that might have cancer, they may need access and not want to come to meetings in person, but rather online. Or if we're doing public participation, we might have people from around the state that weather doesn't permit they travel or it's too far. So I'm just thinking in the same spirit of this entire amendment that we would look thoroughly, not just at canceling meetings, but access to them. So I would actually amend to include or permit the online access to a meeting by a board member, employee of the Department of Education, presenter, or public comment participant.
So it is it is phrased as a friendly amendment if if we if we would, if we could go to our mover of the amendment, our president, your reflections?
I first of all, let me say I love the idea of being more open like that. I do believe that there's other places in our bylaws that are affected by, for example, voting through telephone and things like that. So that might be a more appropriate place to address those. The second thing I would say is it also has to comply with the Open Meetings Act, which we would require, I would say requires the AG to weigh in on that. So I would ask that we would hold off on that. But the other comment I'd make is I don't think we can do friendly amendments. I think our bylaws are pretty clear that you have to introduce it at one meeting and vote on it at another. And since it's already been introduced at the December meeting, I think it would be inappropriate to amend this language. However, I think it is completely appropriate to take a look at the bylaws as a whole and offer future amendments to the bylaws. So this isn't a one-and-done kind of thing. I think there's there's opportunities for us to amend other areas of the bylaws going forward. But I don't think, my impression is, if I'm reading our bylaws correctly, my impression is you put it on the table one month, you vote on it the next. There really isn't room for amendments after it's been laid on the table and held. That would be my impression. If someone has a different impression, that's fine. But absent that, I would say we should vote on this as is and then look at other amendments separately. That would be my recommendation.
Well, I think we get to the same place ultimately, because if you don't accept it as a friend, if you wouldn't under under a friendly amendment process, you'd have to accept it as a friendly amendment. What I'm hearing is you like the concept, you believe that the concept should be individually reflected upon by the board with input from the Attorney General so that we are in compliance with laws more broadly and with Open Meeting Act more specifically. So that being the case, I'm fine with that. Ms. Snyder, your reflection upon that?
Sure, I'd hope that we revisit it. I've just been thinking, again, the whole new newness of what we're wading into. So as long as I would very much appreciate that.
So we will, we will put that on our to-do list to work on this broader reflection with AG in the next 32, in the next 30 to 60 days. So we had, I believe we are at Mr. McMillan.
Okay, and I've been having connection issues, so hopefully it won't be a problem, but I wish I'd thought of this earlier. I think that maybe some prohibition that it can't be used more than once so that we can't have cancellation after cancellation after cancellation. I don't think anybody would do that, but I I think that if we're gonna do this, we should probably limit it so that it can only be done once. I think within 60 days, we can certainly meet. I think within 30 days, we could certainly meet somehow as well. But I also postponement came up, you know, back when this issue arose. And it seemed like we were gonna start, you know, use the word postponed, postponed to mean we can postpone it instead of cancel and it could be postponed for a month instead of using the word cancel. So I don't know if we need to to deal with that word there. And then finally, I don't think a prior body can can bind a current body, the next body. So I don't, I don't know that, like in the legislature, you pass your own rules, you don't amend rules. I I'm thinking that, you know, going that the bylaws would be the new bylaws of this body and not, you know, what happened prior. I don't want to try to look it up because I've got a limited bandwidth already and I might freeze, but but I just am not thinking that, like I said, I think we could probably do whatever whatever we want, we could amend it. And I think those amendments would be important. And I don't know that I'd want to vote on something that would allow continual cancellation from month and month to month. I mean, I couldn't vote yes, but I know it only takes six votes.
Fair enough. We're at Dr. Albridge, Dr. Pugh, and Ms. Lipton in that order.
I think mine was just a reflection of the previous, but I will once again reiterate that I would not want to amend this language, but if there's an amendment requested, that that become a new amendment moving forward. And just in reflection, I don't, our bylaws do not indicate that you can't change the bylaw from December to January. And quite honestly, I don't think the previous board is binding this board to anything because it's this board that's voting on it and we have the right to vote it up or down. But I I do believe that But I, I do believe that this is something that should move forward today because this is an issue that came up. However, if this alleviates the concern, I can tell you, I've been on this board for 14 years. We have canceled or postponed exactly one meeting in that entire time. And that was as a result of a lingering timeframe between an executive order and a legislative-ish order during a pandemic. So I don't see this getting, you know, I understand the concern, but I, I don't see it becoming an issue within the next two months, that if we wanted to amend this bylaw again and put it on next month's agenda and then vote it on the following month. Somehow I don't see us having this become an issue within those two months. So I would encourage the board to vote up or down on this language, and then we can deal with additional changes down the road.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Albridge. Dr. Pugh, Ms. Lipton?
I just wanted to voice support for Nikki's recommendation. And I don't think that it definitely don't think that it needs to hold up the vote, but I do agree and appreciate her bringing up the point particularly about community. And educators have wanted to be a part of our meetings, and they can't do that. And or give input. So I definitely am excited about bringing that up and that we do follow up on that. So.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Lipton?
Yes, I just wanted to thank Board Member Snyder for 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 making that comment. As someone that suffers from a chronic illness, it has been always a concern of mine through this pandemic about exposing myself in a way that would would cause, you know, a severe problem. So I do appreciate the sentiment. And, and I thank Board Member Snyder for bringing that to the board.
Thank you very much. Are there other, are there other comments, concerns, issues to be raised by board members? Hearing and seeing none. Ms. Snyder, not Ms. Snyder, but Ms. Schneider, Ms. Marilyn Schneider, if you would be kind enough to take the roll call vote, please.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
No, but I understand. Like, yeah, since we're not going to adopt the amendments, yeah, I gotta vote no.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Strayhorn?
You're on mute.
I'm reading his lips.
Yes.
He said yes. Tilly?
Yes.
And Albridge?
Yes.
Motion carries. And Albridge?
Okay, thank you very much. And we will be, we will be following up on the the issues raised by Ms. Snyder in the ensuing meetings or meetings. Next item on today's agenda is State and Federal Legislative Update. Mr. Martin Ackley, Director of the Office of Public and Governmental Affairs, will begin this presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Rice, and welcome all board members, especially the two new ones. Good to meet you in person when we can. A new legislative session begins tomorrow. There is a new Speaker of the House, Representative Jason Wentworth. He's from Farwell, which is in central Michigan. And a new House Democratic Leader, Representative Donna Lasinski, she has, she's from Washtenaw County, and she has a pretty extensive education background herself, being a former local board member. The State of the State address is scheduled for January 27, and the governor will do that virtually, which is different, obviously, because of the of the pandemic. Several bills regarding education and children were passed by the legislature at the end of last session, which ended at the end of December and signed into law by Governor Whitmer. You can see the entire list in the State and Federal Legislative Update memo attached to today's agenda. Of particular note of those bills that were signed into law were was House Bill 4694, which affected the school employees on retirement system and substitute teaching where in critical shortage areas, the bill, the law pushed back the sunset to July 1, 2025, and strikes a three-year limitation and removes a 12-month waiting period for retirees who do not work in the month of retirement to then work in the in a school district that has an extended COVID-19 learning plan. Also, interim teaching certificate bill, Senate Bill 657, where people would be able to obtain an interim teaching certificate for special education through an alternative route program. That was signed into law by the governor, as well as, as previously mentioned, the Open Meetings Act law, which was Senate Bill 1246, which would allow public bodies under certain circumstances to meet electronically, virtually, until March 31 of 2021. A number of other issues that were priorities at the end of last session by the Department and five statewide education organizations were not passed, which we will continue to pursue early in this session, including the issues of educator evaluations, substitute teacher shortages, or an individual may have a minimum of 60 semester credit hours to qualify to substitute teach. Also, changing the law on the teacher-student data link. And also the Read by Grade 3 retention law, where retention should be stricken from the Read by Grade 3 law so that schools can focus on meeting the myriad needs of children rather than holding a portion of students back. So that's a quick rundown. Because the legislature has not come into the new session, there are no committees yet formed yet, so we don't know who the committee members will be for our Scanning and Appropriations Committee for Education. And my team and I look forward to working with Representative, I mean, Representative Lipton, right, now Board Member Lipton, and the other members of the Legislative Committee going forward. Dr. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Ackley. Board members, are there any questions or comments relative to the report? We have a question from then Representative, now now Board Member Lipton.
And I'll even answer to hey you, so whatever. So the question that I had was, well, I have two questions. The first question is, are you, are you tracking, I'm looking here at this list, and a lot of the bills, at least on the House side, looks like they were introduced in December by third-term, third-term members, which is oftentimes very common. And then they get passed around oftentimes to get picked up by new members. Have you done any tracking of bills that you think are more likely to get picked up quickly from this group? And, you know, any sense of, you know, any bills that are going to be fast-tracked? That's the first question. And then the second question is, I somehow remember reading a lot of discussion about a dyslexia package. And I don't know if it was ever introduced, but I didn't see it on this list here. So it could be that I was reading about it without it ever ever having been introduced. But
I'll answer the, I'll answer the second, and Marty will answer the the first. A dyslexia package was introduced.
Okay.
Package of four bills in the, in the Senate. We did have some conversation with one of the four Senate sponsors. We do think that there is some value associated with aspects of those four bills. We do think that there are some inherent challenges within those bills. They bump into one another a little bit. So, but we do think that there is some effort that should be ultimately legislatively finalized in partnership with the department around dyslexia. We do think that there is a value associated with that. So we have been in contact with members of the legislature on this four-bill package, and we'll be doing more work with those individuals moving, moving forward. Mr. Ackley, to the, to Ms. Lipton's first question?
We track every bill that gets introduced in both the House and Senate, and we track it all the way through, and we follow, and we get analyses. We make a determination in the department which are more likely to get action because of relationships that our team has with the legislature. I can't say we know at this point, because the session hasn't started, what's going to get introduced and pushed at this point. Because, as you know, every committee chairperson has an agenda, each caucus has an agenda. And so we don't know at this point which ones will have priority as the session begins, although we know that the, the bills, the issues that we had brought up in a, in a letter that I mentioned earlier, in the letter that we sent to the legislature during lame duck, that were the priorities of the department, the board, and those five statewide education associations, we will be pursuing those to make sure that those, in fact, we even included in that letter that was co-signed by Dr. Rice and the executive directors of the five statewide organizations, that those, that those issues on that, in that letter that aren't passed in lame duck will be priorities early in this session.
And we anticipate taking those remaining issues up, first with our Board Legislative Committee, and then once again with the legislature. We were under no illusions that we were going to get all six of those accomplished during what was being billed as the lame lame duck session. It was a skinny lame duck session. We knew that there were only so many things that could get addressed. We understood that. These are issues, we were pleased to get two of the six accomplished with the support of the governor and her team. Additionally, we were pleased to get some attention on the other issues. We spoke most recently with a state senator on this package, and we'll be talking with other legislators moving forward, but would welcome the opportunity, as I've discussed with board members, to do more in in partnership, not simply within the department, but also with board, with legislature. There should really be a triangle there, and it ought to include, but not be limited to others in the field, our orgs, MASA, MASB, MASBB, MEMSPA, MSBO, Middle Cities, MAISA, and the like. So thank you very much. Dr. Pugh? You're on, you're on, you're on mute, too.
Okay. Okay, let me remember which question I had, which bill. I think mine was around any bills that were related to school safety, as health, environmental safety, did those pop up? And I know that we'll have some discussion on that, hopefully, in February.
Bills specifically related to school safety. Mr. Ackley, can you reference any?
Not off the top of my head, but I will, I will do some research, and maybe Ms. Lipton has an answer. We'll get back with you for sure.
Okay.
Yep, it's Rep. Sherry Gay-Danyogo's bill on school safety. She introduced it in December, I think, but she's a third-termer. So it might be, you know, it might not be a bad idea to see if she, she, she gave that bill to, that's a very common thing for third-termers to do, is to find a first-termer and, you know, have them shepherd it, so.
And bills will stay within the caucus so that new members can come in and get bills that did not move within the caucus. And so they will get the bluebacks to introduce themselves in their new session.
There was another bill that should have bipartisan support, and I think we'll talk about it next month. And then Marty, I'll, I'll pick you, I'll get with you before, before that, just to see where we are with that. It was more related to water and making sure that the water quality prior to schools reopening. And I just wanted to know where that bill was, but hopefully it's being okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Other comments, questions, concerns of state board members? Fears, phobias, neuroses? Casting a little broader net? Ms. Johnson, with the narrow net or the broader net? Either one, it's your floor.
Narrow, just in in direct response to Dr. Pugh's comments, I just wanted to flag that we did add a section related to both, actually, we added two sections related to air quality and water quality in the updated guidance that we released on Friday that Superintendent Rice referenced. And so in the original, in the original roadmap, we had no, no mention of water quality as it related to schools and sort of little mention of ventilation. And so those are now new sections in the the updated guidance for operating schools safely, and it includes links to a deeper set of recommendations on each of those topics with Eagle. So I just wanted to thank you for elevating this issue as an important part of operating schools safely and, and say out loud that we heard, we heard that and reflected it in the guidance that was published.
I really appreciate you saying that, Randy, because, you know, sometimes folks don't think that we do, we're well-rounded and have a lot to say here at this table. And we do, and I do appreciate you for mentioning that, that you, the governor's office and the department's, I appreciate that. And I did read through the guidance, and I was happy to, to hear that. And I'll have questions about ashtray and, you know, how those funds are being spent. I was going to leave it for my comments, but I can ask it here. And really, maybe next month, if we can have an update on how we think that we're going to be able to move those funds, because we do not want to find ourselves in another position like we were with the lead funds. And schools didn't want to use the money because they didn't want to identify the problem because they didn't have the resources to fix the problem. The other piece is that we want to make sure that if we are giving resources, that it's something that can, I don't want to use the word perpetuity, but when we're talking about water filters, when we're talking about air filters, you can't just put them on and leave them there. So, and we don't have the wherewithal or the resources, the people, the bodies to oversee that in schools. So just how are we making sure that this is something that we continue to monitor? And it's not just about a water crisis in Flint, it's not just about this pandemic, but these are issues and items that we probably should have long been thinking about. And then how are, how are we shifting our mindsets and making sure that, that any legislation, any appropriations are taking that into consideration? And you don't have to answer it now. I think that that's a conversation that hopefully we will get into next month, unless you do have response to it.
I would just add that we were, when looking at the allowable uses for the, the new federal funds that Dr. Rice described in his update, so we've been calling it the S R two, for lack of a better word, the money, the, the money that will be distributed directly to the districts via the title formula that was discussed, we are really pleased to see that air quality improvements is now a more explicit allowable use of those funds. And it's something we, I know the governor is very interested in elevating that use of funds. You know, when the first round came out, we identified some of those uses and tried to have the governor elevate them to encourage schools to select that as the use of, of funds. We are really thrilled that those facility improvements as it relates to air and water were, were more explicitly stated in, in the boilerplate associated with the, the funds authorized by Congress. And I think it is something we should call more attention to.
Thank you.
So, so to that, to that point, they're really the, the short-term pieces. So, so, so to that, to that point, they're really the, the short-term pieces that are critical in these areas. And then there are the, the longer-term pieces. And, and I'm hopeful that we're able not only to get some, something done on the short-term pieces, the, the filters, the opening of dampers, the opening of windows, the opening of doors, the cross ventilation, all of those important elements. But I'm also hopeful that we're able to change out some of those old systems which don't have as frequent an air exchange as we now recognize to be important. And, and you know, Dr. Pugh, you've been, you've been sharing this as, as an important element or set of elements, given your background. And Brandy Johnson, you and I have spoken about this as recently as in the last 24 hours. So we appreciate the partnership on this, on this issue. Just so hopeful that we're able to change out some of these old systems because the, the, the filters and the, the cross ventilation only does so much. And I'm hoping that some of our, our school districts with this significant federal infusion of funds sees fit to change out some of these very, very, very old mechanical systems. You know, if you have a mechanical system older than your state superintendent, that it is time for that mechanical system to be changed. Anything more on mechanical systems or old superintendents going once and twice? Yes?
I was gonna say, see, I thought you were 25, but that's not too old. But no, I do have one more question. Social and emotional, the funding there. And again, just the appropriations there, just is there any way that we can help, that we can encourage, that we can assess and see and look at best practices of how this funding is going to the school systems, but making sure that they're connecting with the right people in communities? And I know the last grant funding was kind of to do that. But having a foot in both of these worlds, I know that there are people in the, in the science, in the health world, that public health world, that are just thinking of ways to help around the social and emotional supports. And then schools are, are beginning to get these resources. And I know that sometimes, I mean, to Tom's point, making sure that the resources that we have, we're utilizing them the best way possible. And sometimes it's yourself short-staffed, you don't have the time to fully think these things out because you're in an emergency. But if there's any, how are we supporting schools to make sure that they're utilizing the resources in the communities and beyond to, to utilize those funds?
So this is a longer conversation for another board meeting. The mental health dollars and the social and emotional learning dollars, though related, are, are also somewhat different. The issue of measurement of impact is very, very important. The issue of what people mean by social and emotional learning is very important. We began our SCL network, RCL slash Children's Mental Health Network in part because of some of these issues that you raised. The need during a pandemic to train up as broadly as possible, recognizing, recognizing that we have definitional issues, number one. We have depth of knowledge issues, number two. We have, just because someone calls it SEL doesn't mean it is SEL issues, number, number three. I, I think the power of this year, as brutal as it has been in many, many, many different ways, is the recognition that this space is important for our young people. That our young people are not simply about academics, are not simply about math, science, social studies, reading, writing, and by extension, all other related academic subjects, that they are so much more as human beings. And that we have to be about developing all of those sides of them. And SEL is so powerful in, in that regard. It's brutal that we've had to endure a pandemic. It is a small silver lining that we have begun to recognize just how important this area or these areas are in the midst of a, of a pandemic. The, the governor has been enormously supportive in this area. Our state legislators have been supportive in this area. Our educators increasingly have dug into this and have worked. And, and now we have issues about depth of understanding, consistency or cohesion of, of understanding and of action. We've got some MHEF money, as you know, Dr. Pugh, Michigan Health Endowment Fund dollars, to work with a cohort of districts and really sink these deeply into the soil of their community. And we are going to begin to work with a couple of different SEL groups that are strong in measurement. You may recall that our third state strategic education plan goal is health, safety and wellness of children. And you may recall that the metrics to which you added substantially, which include now asthma and lead exposure, are a mix of physical health and mental health metrics. I can see that none of those, those metrics is perfect. I don't know that we have perfect metrics in this area. What I do think though is of power is to look at this world of physical and social and emotional health in a variety of different ways. And you, you almost triangulate around how we're doing with and for our children. So we, we do have, we've begun and we've made, I think, more strides in the journey in the last year, in part because of the pandemic than in any other year prior to that. But I think it's also exhibited just how much more work we have to do moving forward. We have a ton of work to do in this area. So with appreciation for, for everyone. If there are no more questions or comments, we will pivot. Ms. Drackley, thank you for your presentation. Ms. Tilly, do we have a NASB report? I'm going to...
Sorry, I was unmuting.
Okay.
No, we don't, but I'd like to say thank you all for allowing me to serve over the past two years as the NASB rep. And I'd like to say congratulations to Dr. Judy Pritchett.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Tilly. Thank you very much. Thank you for your service. Comments by state board of education members? Comments by state board of education members? Who has a comment? Going once and twice? Tom McMillan, Mr. McMillan?
Yeah.
Rep. McMillan, AKA Board Member McMillan?
I had to resort to the phone because my computer connection kept, kept going down. I, I just couldn't leave Dr. Rice your comments without rebuttal saying that the president incited violence. I mean, I'm looking at President Obama's, in the archives is from the White House, that President Obama is leading the fight to protect everyone. Nobody suggested it when he says that, that, that he was trying to incite violence. And so from what all I've been able to read, they point to some word, fight, a real or perceived injustice that the president was talking about. And so whether you agree or disagree, I think it's, you know, if we're gonna start trying to silence people saying we need to fight for the rights of something or we need to fight some kind of injustice and, and start calling it inciting violence, then, you know, it's, it's gonna be very harmful to, and very harmful to free speech. So anything that I've seen, there's no way that he was trying to get people to go and fight and break in the Capitol. It was ridiculous. And so I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Dr. Pugh? Dr. Pugh?
I'm coming. Sorry, 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 sorry. I'm off mute. And I, I, I just wanted to, you know, I, I was able to ask some of my questions as it related to the school reopening. And I just wanna just talk a little bit about, just very quickly, won't hold anybody up. And plus, we have what, another hour and a half, so like, maybe I can. But I know that President-elect Joe Biden, I know that he's pushing to open schools within, or have students return within the first 100 days. And then the governor just recently put out her goal to have school districts in-person learning no later than March 1st. And I do, you know, Tom has brought this up, you've brought it up, and Cassandra has brought it up. But this is while, you know, our country is at war with COVID still and with ourselves. And I, I do, I agree that this has been both COVID, where we are with COVID as well as where we are with the state of affairs now have both been fed and fueled and/or I feel orchestrated by our president. And it was almost a year ago that, it was January 22nd, that the president said that COVID was coming to an end, that everything was under control. And that was all while he was also hearing from his national security that it was gonna be the biggest threat to his presidency. And then even worse is that we know that the POTUS has yet to fully acknowledge COVID and its threat. And that, and that's the current president and many other people who work with the president have yet to fully acknowledge COVID and the threat that it poses to our country and to the people. And also, I just want to point out that, you know, our very defenses, the very few defenses that we've had have been withheld from us. You know, whether we're talking about masks and how the masks were downplayed, whether we talk about how the air, air exposure, the exposure of COVID through air was downplayed, very critical, but yet it was downplayed. And so here we are. We have more deaths due to COVID than any world battle, any battle that we've had in the US, including World War II. We know that COVID was, it was compared to the flu. And within eight months, we had surpassed the number of deaths due to the, due to COVID or due to flu. COVID had surpassed that within eight months. That, so, and let me go back. The flu for, for five years, 2015 to 2020, for five years, the flu, we had lesser case deaths due to flu over five years than we had in the first eight months that we were marking or monitoring the deaths due to COVID. I said this last month, strokes, suicides, car crashes. We surpassed those deaths. We did that in 10, in 10 months that we usually see in one year. And globally, though, the US makes up 4%, about 4.2% of the world's population, we are making up 25% of the cases and 20% of the deaths. If we look at the number of cases that we should have, the number of deaths that we should have, it would be about 82,000 deaths, which is a lot. But instead, we have 377, over 377,000 deaths. So that's 4.6 times the over-repr- over-representation of deaths when we compare our population to the world. And then we look at black, brown and indigenous communities. And I, while I was sitting here, I received notice that a childhood friend died today from COVID. And I know we don't show emotions here, but, but it did happen. Since Christmas, two of my best friends had COVID. I was, the day after Christmas, I was nervous when I got a call from her mom. She called me crying, saying that she was afraid because they both went to get tested. And my best friend, her daughter, had to stay in the hospital because her, her oxygen levels were down to, to 90%. COVID is so real to, to many of us. And so here we are, and we're looking at the 1.5 million schoolchildren that should be returning to school. And there's been this whole big push to return to normalcy. And I do appreciate the words that, that you shared, Dr. Rice and, and Brandy. I did go through the documents and, and the guidance that was shared by the governor and, and the departments and the team. And I want, I will say, I was impressed because I was on a call, a NASB call last week, and there were some questions raised. I, I asked a couple of questions. And one was to the CDC and asking how are they looking at air quality? And the response there was, yes, they're considering it, but are they working as closely with the FDA as they should? Or, and so that, that work is just really, from what I understand, is really fledgling as far as air quality with the CDC. And that's where we get our guidance, a lot of our guidance from. So the other thing that I do want to bring up is that we talk about the studies with, with schoolchildren. And the, two of the, or I could go on. There's, there's other people just within the last month that I do know who have contracted the virus. It has been related to children. And so it's very difficult, especially when you're in communities where the, where the, where the virus is widespread, it's very difficult to determine which came first, the chicken or the egg. Children are typically asymptomatic. When they transmit the virus, it often, you don't know until the adult has it and then you go back and you're testing other families. And I've, about six people that I've known since these were, that have, have contracted the virus and children were involved and the children were tested positive and they, they were asymptomatic. So as we're talking about, you know, rushing to get children back to school, I definitely understand the need for that. I, I, I really do. I understand what, what schools and the school settings offer. But I also understand that certain populations, the risk has to really be discussed, shared and broken down to those families because for some people in some communities, the risk is going to be far greater. I've talked about the statistics of children, black children, brown children. But, but for some children and families, the risk is gonna be far, far greater, not for the children, but for the families that they're, they're exposing. And so my question is, you know, some of the questions I've already been able to ask about, you know, how much funding has been used, if any, as it relates to ventilation? Are the plans long-term? Looking at the studies, because I do hear repeating studies and making sure that those studies really do look at transmission as well as children getting sick in schools? How are we doing with our contact tracing? Making sure that we're not changing any communities where the community spread is wide? And then I talked about the social, emotional wellbeing because whether students are in school or out of school, we want to make sure that those tools are, are there for the children. And we talked about the ventilation and, and how we can move forward and that there is a plan to move forward. So I just wanted to share that because there is a lot of anxiety and we can only imagine that educators at every break that they've had, they've had to continuously wonder if they're going back to school or not. Well, I, I just wanted to share that and that was a lot. And I am...
That, that was a lot. And I'm going to assume that that was mostly comments rather than question, with the exception of some of those elements that are going... questions, with the exception of some of those elements that are going to be answered from or by our friends at Eagle and DHHS. And I'll be following up with communication to them, looping Brandy into that communication so that we can get some answers to, and have the opportunity to provide feedback into, and input into that work as well. So, thank you. Ms. Snyder and Mr. Strathorne.
Thank you. And I'll just say, thank you for your comments. Pam, I do agree that perspective and context is very important, and anticipate as we move forward that the concept of risk, discussing it, breaking it down as we think about and talk about moving forward, will be important. I just, I wanted to spend some time talking about the state of our country, and even Michigan just a little bit, and kind of discuss a little bit of what Cassandra was talking about earlier as well. It has been quite a heavy week, I would say, in our house, and I struggle when I, when I explain things to my children, I feel like I'm frequently defending the right to peaceful protest, defending the right to free speech. I will never not defend those rights, and yet, we always hear that, and then violence always follows. And when violence follows, death follows. And what happened last week is not the first time we've seen, you know, peaceful protests turn into violence and death. We've been seeing it all year long on both sides. And so, I get frustrated when we pin it on one party, one president. You know, my gut and my heart and my head is so committed to the concept that before there's peaceful protest, before that even happens, there's the example that we all set together at the board, our diplomatic relationships together. And not to take personal responsibility as a board, but to conceptualize the reality that it's happening everywhere. I often say, it has been decades of poisonous politics that we have lived through, decades. And now, we are dealing with the outcome of decades of poisonous politics. So when Cassandra says, I'm going to embark on an effort to consider civics in schools, just the very reality of how we communicate to one another as we disagree, as we debate, as we do the decision-making that we're expected to do and follow through with, it's not just an oath to office. I'm realizing that we have lost our way simply because it's not just an oath to office, it's a professional agreement to be diplomatic in the way that we treat one another. And to be sure that when we walk away from the table, we aren't harming one another as we, as we discuss the issues and make decisions that are best for students first. So, I'm intrigued, Cassandra, by your offer and your suggestion that that's something our board should embark on. Because I really very much do believe that we need to set an example as leaders first. So that would be, you know, my comments for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Mr. Strathorne and Dr. Pritchett.
Well, first, I'd like to thank everybody for the warm welcome today for my first meeting. Ellen and I, that was, it was very informative. I think that we have a lot of bright members here on this board. It's really, it makes me reflect about our responsibility on this board to serve. You take an oath of office to serve, and you ask, I ask myself the question, who do I, who am I serving? When we, we take that oath, and it's not my own personal belief system as far as, you know, what's best for me, it's what's best for everyone. It's what's best for literally the students, teachers, faculty, and staff of the state of Michigan, what's best for them as a whole. And, you know, I hear the turmoil, you know, the pain that happened a week ago at the Capitol Building in Washington, D.C. Let's just make no mistake about that, that was an insurrection, in my opinion, by the President of the United States. I think that those who committed the violence, that may have started out as a peaceful protest, may have needed civics education lesson that President Albrecht is talking about. Being able to critically think through situations, I think, is important for all Americans. And there's a huge gap that we've lost our way in that. I think that our only hope is to really get to the young, the youth of this society, to get them to follow, and those of us to understand that emotions running over and words do matter. They do matter, and they can lead, exactly what you just said, Nikki Snyder, about, you know, those things can end up in violence, and then from violence leads to death, which we, we had five, five people pass away last week in the result of what happened in Washington. I'm hopeful that we can lead by example. This isn't about my bank account, this isn't about my tax base, you know, you know, we, if we all can love one another and help one another, I think that we'd be better as a society as a whole. I know we have a lot of work to do, a long way to go, but I am very hopeful for the conversation that we're having right now, be able to understand one another, and to be able to take those steps forward over the next few years. So, I just wanted to make those comments. I'm very thankful for you, Ms. Dr. Rice, for you and your mission. And again, once again, thankful for everyone for the warm welcome, and I'm glad to be here and look forward to it.
Thank you, Mr. Strathorne. Dr. Pritchett, and then Mr. Griffin and Ms. Johnson.
I don't know whether I can speak before Mr. Griffin or not. Anyways, first of all, I wanted to take this opportunity to welcome Jason and Ellen to the State Board. I look, very much look forward to working with both of you. Ellen, I remember you and I working together when I held another position as we fought off the EAA. And so, that is what comes to mind when I think about you, and I know that deep inside you, you have the heart and soul of all of our students in Michigan. Jason, I don't know you as well, but in the brief times that I have heard you, I know that that is indeed where you are also, as are all of the board members. We're very, very fortunate that while we have some diverse views, we are grounded in all of the students in Michigan. I also want to thank Owen. I thought his presentation on assessments was very good, and I appreciate that overview, especially coming from the lens of a teacher, because it is the teachers who have to provide those assessments. And so I thought he did a nice job of an overview of that. I am encouraged. I want to thank Governor Whitmer for her comments last week about encouraging schools to begin to look at, districts to begin to look at the opportunity to provide in-person instruction for students. I know that is difficult for some communities, I recognize that. And so the positive side of being a local control state indicates that it is those communities that need to make those decisions, but we understand the absolute importance of the in-person option for our students. We're not going to get back to normal tomorrow. I know someone said to me on New Year's Eve, oh, wow, it's a new year tomorrow, and it's going to be different. And I warned them that, well, not really, but we're taking steps in the right direction. We have vaccines available now, and thank you again to the governor and to the Health Department for making those available to our educators. I know, you know, we may have more people than what we have vaccines in the state right now, but I'm hopeful that that's going to get taken care of here pretty soon. I want to thank the students again in the state of Michigan, the staff, the teachers, and I believe January is School Board Appreciation Month. So, thank you to all those local boards who didn't sign up for this, as none of us did for the pandemic. And we've all had those discussions, but when you're a local board member, and you make a decision one night, and the next morning you have to go to your local grocery store to pick up milk, and your constituents are right there, especially now when we're facing these kinds of decisions. I think we need to be cognizant of the fact of the great burden and the great responsibility each one of them has. And so I appreciate them, and I want to thank them. Cassandra, I completely concur with your remarks. Being a poli sci major myself and a previous U.S. government teacher, I would love to work alongside you on that initiative. We do need to help students in our communities understand what true civics is. And it is an opportunity for us to debate, but to debate civilly, to understand the facts, to honor those who may have an opinion different than ours, but to base those opinions in fact. And so I will be glad to work with you on that whenever you're ready to get started. And so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. Ms. Johnson, and then Ms. Tilly.
Sorry, I'm muting, I'm muting. I just wanted to, so thank you for those comments, Judy, and just wanted to respond to just two things that Dr. Pugh said. One is, I should reemphasize, or I should remember to emphasize that in terms of the governor's, you know, messaging on Friday and the materials we put out, we still, of course, want to emphasize the element of parental choice in terms of families making a decision about returning to school face-to-face. And so that, while we are strongly encouraging schools to find a path to provide in-person, face-to-face learning opportunities as an opportunity for students, I just wanted to say again out loud that in terms of an individual decision that a family or child needs to make, of course, would respect that child's, or his or her parent's decision to continue learning from a distance. And I think that's really important, that we support the families that are making that decision that don't feel yet that it is safe. And then the second thing, you know, I do also want to say out loud that I don't think what the governor said represented a rush to get back to in-person. So, other than the small pause at the end of November, beginning of December for high schools, schools have been able to legally open and operate in-person, face-to-face learning this entire to-school year. We purposefully released the roadmap with best practice recommendations on June 30th, even though it was a rush to get that to the finish line. We were really committed to that deadline so as to give schools ample planning time. And so, you know, they were able to plan for two months during the summer as they were looking to restart the next school year. And then those that, that did not open right away have had, you know, lots of time to plan for a safe reopening. And then again, the governor's North Star goal is to have all schools operating or providing in-person options by March 1st, which is still, you know, more than a month and a half away. And so, in every step of the way, we wanted to make sure that we were clearly communicating, dedicated, and ample time for planning a safe return. We never would want to just throw educators and students in a building and say, you know, here are the rules, figure it out. That, that every step of the way, we've wanted to build in time for, for, you know, cross-sector stakeholder groups to come together to plan the safe return, and then obviously give educators time to practice protocols and infection control measures, and get comfortable with this new normal that we're, that we're all in. I just don't want it to, to come across that we are all rushing to get back to school in person, although we think it's so critically important that students have face-to-face learning opportunities.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Tilly.
Thank you. I would like to welcome our newest board members to the board, and I look forward to serving with you guys. I also want to make comments about what happened at the state capitol. I think that we need to call what happened there what it is. It was domestic terrorism. It was not a peaceful protest. It was planned. They were prepared for what happened. And many Congress members believed that it was an inside job. And it was just shameful to watch them destroy our state capitol and to have standoff and, you know, with guns, and to jump over the walls. And we should be careful how we deal with this, because it's setting the president in our country, and because our children are watching. I don't even view it as, you know, so much the Republican, Democratic thing, let's throw that out the window. This is the first time in U.S. history that we have not had a peaceful transfer of power. And this has been led by President Donald Trump, regardless of party. I think more so it is the man that has been in office for the last four years that has been creating a very toxic environment in this country. For years and years, this is the 45th president, like I said, we've had a peaceful transfer of power, so this is not about party. Moving forward with this pandemic, I think that as far as education goes, because I definitely would like to get back to the conversation of education, I think as far as education goes, we have a great opportunity to change the way that we educate our children. The structure of education has been around for a very long time in this country now, and it definitely, and I mean, we've had these conversations, it definitely needs to be revamped. That needs to be our focus. We need to take time to really buckle down and focus on how do we take this opportunity, that this time that we're in, and use it so that we can better educate our children. The way that it has been set up, it has been, it was set up for industrialism. It was set up to get people ready for the workforce when they graduate from high school. Now we have an opportunity to really create great, and shape great thinkers, not just great workers. So, I'm looking forward to the work that we are going to do on the State Board and with MDE for 2021 and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tilly. Ms. Lipton, and then Dr. Pugh.
Thank you. I would just like to thank all of you for your warm welcome. I could not be more honored and privileged to serve with all of you and esteemed group of colleagues, everyone with their interest, expertise, and their passion, all moving in the same direction, which is to improve educational opportunities for our students. And as I sit here today, that is the definition of democracy. Each one of us, elected in our own right by the citizens of this great state, serving together in an open, transparent manner, debating, considering, arguing issues that are of the utmost importance for the goodwill of the citizens of the state. And I am extremely honored and privileged to be a part of this body. I would like to take a moment to thank President Albrecht for entrusting the chair of the Legislative Committee in me, having had the perspective of the department and the State Board of Education from both the legislature. And then as a private citizen, I do have a vision for the Legislative Committee, which I will share with, with all of you in the coming months. And I encourage everyone to be a part of the process. And I will look to all of you for input and guidance as we all work together for the, for the betterment of the students of the state. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Dr. Pugh. Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Dr. Pugh?
Um, I did want to welcome Ellen and Jason. And I did want to thank the pastor from Pontiac for his work and for, for coming and providing the comments. I did want to also put, usually, I don't know if we still have on the agenda, I don't have my agenda up, but items to think about. And one of the things that we have not talked about is failing children at this time who are showing up. We do know that there are, there is an issue with children who are not showing up. There are children who are showing up. And there are, there has been issue with children being failed grade-wise. And hopefully we can have a conversation about that. And I do want to, to brandy to your comments. What, what I did not bring up is that I, I truly believe that the pause that has been put in children returning back to school has definitely saved lives. And whether it's the governor rushing to return, which I, I think, I, I know that this is something that's being heavily influenced by people who are rushing to return. And, and, and I made note of who I believe that those, those people are. And I know that there is this constant battle. I do also know that there are parents out there. There are teachers who are ready to get back. But there are also parents and parents who are concerned and confused. And there are also teachers who are concerned and rightfully so. And while I do thank the governor for the pauses and the, and the stepping out and, and taking children out of school, pausing the economy, and we do gratefully thank her. And we do know that we've seen tremendous strides when that has happened. However, there is a rush to open this economy that she will be influenced by. We're influenced by that. And so, again, I will reiterate, I did read the report and, and what I took in, in the first read, it, I, I was impressed, especially in comparison to some of the conversation that, that I've heard across the country.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. And Cassandra, Dr. Albrecht?
I just wanted to say I really appreciate the comments that have been made. And this is, I always look forward to the end of the meeting because we have a great conversation. And then I'm also a little hesitant about the end of the meeting because sometimes it goes in directions that we don't necessarily anticipate or, or would like to see. So I, I wanted to wrap up just by saying a couple things. One, I, I want to thank all of you for your support in me in continuing as the board president. And, and I truly, truly, truly welcome working with all of you over the next two years. I think we have the potential to do some really important, great work. And I'm excited, this first meeting, I think, was a really good launch to, to very, very productive years. And so I appreciate that. And I also want to say that I, I really appreciate and I take to heart the comments related to making sure that we on this board are setting the right example. And we have done that in the past. This board has been really the example in Lansing when it comes to bipartisanship and working together and making sure that we're all working towards a common goal. It's, it's something that I think we have been able to do even in times when the partisanship in Lansing is off the charts. This board works together and works together well because we have a common goal. And, but it's not enough just to set the example when it comes to partisanship. I think we also need to set the example when it comes to tone, when it comes to respect, when it comes to, you know, making sure that we are having really important debates, but doing it in a way that we, we can still come together at the end of those debates and appreciate the work that we're all doing. And so I will do my best to set the example. I, I know that you will do that as well. And just want to say that I, I think that this is, this is a really good first step for us.
Thank you, Dr. Albrecht. Mr. McMillan?
Dr. Rice, yeah, thanks. One last comment and some, something that Pam or somebody said reminded me. Dr. Rice, I was really concerned about your comments over the last month regarding registering homeschool kids. I, these children are not the state's children. These are the parents or the guardians' children. And I, I am appalled at the idea that the state thinks that they, that some, I trust that it wouldn't get through the legislature, would think that, that these children belong to the state and that they need to be tracking them and, and watching in on them. And it, I just, I was very disappointed someone to voice that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. I've just a few, just a few final thoughts with respect to homeschool children. The, the point was not registration. The point was not tracking or monitoring. The point was simply to be able to count them so that we could by extension count missing children. Typically, you have children in four buckets. You have children in public schools, private schools, parochial schools, and homeschools. And that represents the waterfront. But in a pandemic, we have some children that are unaccounted for. We, we have estimated that they are approximately 13,000 of these young people. And so in order to count the number of missing children, we have to be able to count, not monitor, not register, not track in any particular way. Simply count the number of homeschool children. So we're able to count the number of missing children. So that's all. It's not an effort to deeply insert ourselves in the homeschool environment in any way, shape, or form. I want to congratulate all of our new officers, Dr. Albrecht, Dr. Pugh, Mr. McMillan, Ms. Tilly, and Dr. Pritchett. I want to thank our new School Board members, Mr. Strayhorn and Ms. Lipton. I want to thank Ms. Snyder for being Ms. Snyder, because I want to thank all of my board members for being. Congratulations to Miguel, to Miguel Cardona, our U.S. Secretary of Education select. I am very enthusiastic about his selection. I had the opportunity to connect with him briefly over break. And so hopeful for his partnership with the incoming president and drum beating around the theme of all students, not just some students. I think that that's going to be enormously important. I want to thank the Biden transition team, the Biden ed transition team, for the opportunity to meet with it twice over winter break. And I just want to share one additional thought about the opening of the schools. Because, you know, a lot of people are a little bit unclear. We've had the majority of schools open since day one in the state. We've had a majority of schools open. We've had a minority of children attending those schools. And that, that, that's not simply November and December. That's August through the present, the present day. The decisions of some families help facilitate the decisions of other families. So there are going to be some families that say, absolutely, Michael cannot go to school given his health issues or the health issues in our family. And those decisions will thin out numbers that permit other children to go to school in a, in a safer way. Some of our parents aren't going to permit their children to return to in-person instruction until next year. I think we understand that clearly. My hope is that all children will have the opportunity for in-person instruction this year, the option for in-person instruction. I'm under no illusion that we're going to have 1.5 million people back in public schools this year. I, I don't believe that at all. In fact, I think we will be hard-pressed to get a sizable majority of children back in schools in person, given concerns of parents around the pandemic. My hope, though, is that everybody has that opportunity and that that opportunity not be associated with some children in some communities, but available for all children in all communities, recognizing that different decisions of different families will help make other decisions for other families more possible. That's, that's all. And I, I want to share that because if some people associate the opening of schools with all children returning. And we've had a majority of the districts have a majority of the schools open for a good part of the first half of the school year. But that's different from having the vast majority of our children in school, which we've not had. So I see this as incremental. I see this as piece by piece, little by little. I think the vaccines will have, the vaccinations will help us out. I think the antigen testing will help us out. And I think particularly what will help us out is people digging in with those mitigation efforts and saying, yes, I hate to wear a mask, but this is what I need to do to make myself more protected and all the people in my circumstance, in my environment, more protected. If we do collectively what we need to do, more of our young people can get back to school safely with staff and, and get, get about the business of public education. So I just, it's really a strong exhortation because some people, on the one hand, they want to be back in school. On the other hand, they don't want to do what's hard but necessary to stay in school and to stay in school safely. I don't like wearing a mask either. I will tell you, I walk out of the house, I'm wearing my mask. And that's just what it is. I do it not simply because of my own health, but I do it because of the health of others. Because if I don't, I expose others conceivably to me if I were to be infected. So anyway, just a, a little bit of a clarification there at the end of the board meeting. I thought it was a rich board meeting. It is representative of the strength and the gifts of the members of the Board of Education. Future board meetings are going to be held on February 9th, March 9th, and April 13th, all Tuesdays, all at 9:30 a.m., all regular meetings. If there are any topics board members would like included in future meeting agendas, please let us know. I do not know of a shy board member. That's almost an oxymoron. It is 2:50 p.m., 2:51 p.m. Let the record show that we have given you an early Happy New Year's gift, the gift of time. Have a great day, everyone. Thank you.